Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to first start off by thanking you for coming out to talk to the trustees from the Oak Cliff area. Audrey and Lou and myself are trying to work together to make our schools better throughout the district, but specifically we have a kindred spirit on Oak Cliff schools. And I'll start with the bond program and facilities. Most of you all know that I served on the 2002 and the 2008 bond committee, so I have a lot of knowledge about what goes on in the bond. Currently, we're under some pressure where the bond is concerned because there has been conversation about restructuring the way the program managers handle bonds. That is supposed to be on the agenda for Thursday, but I'd like to tell you tonight that that's been pulled from the agenda after a lot of work, particularly on trustee Blackburn, trustee Nuttall, and myself. But the community paid in part of the work. We can't do much without your advocacy, and because you were able to advocate for what is right, we will be looking at ways to make sure of that that doesn't happen. And I am not uncomfortable with saying that one of the team leaders is here, which is Williams from Nikita Engineering. And I just want you to know that we are in spirit with making sure that MWB participation does continue to work in the Dallas Independent School District as long as possible. Most of the people who live in District 6 know that I did not support the bond, and I did not support the bond because of the structure. And right now, we're fighting over what should happen with the bond because we didn't do it like we did in 2008 and 2002 where there were projects specific. The community voted for the district to just have $1.6 billion, and the community must have word and must have some say in how that money is set. That is my commitment to you as a trustee, that I'm going to do everything possible to make sure that you continue to have some say in that we will not have the administration making all the decisions. What I will tell you is that I believe the administration has done a really good job in revisiting what we started out and making sure that there are some priorities that need to be addressed, and particularly with Carter High School.
Right now.
Which happens to be one of the schools in my district that I advocated that we really make sure that we do what's needed at Carter to continue to make us competitive with. You saw this handout that I gave you. That's charter schools in this area. Not only are we competing with charter schools in this area, we're competing with Duncanville, Salda, Lancaster, Cedar Hills, and other school districts in the area. But I am a firm believer in Dallas Independent School District and the ability of Dallas Independent School District to give all of our children a great education. I could talk forever, but I'll say.
Good evening. Audrey Pinkerton, trustee from District 7, I represent the northern half of Oak Cliff, Illinois up to I-30 and from I-35 west to U-12, Long Island. I'll start out by talking about the bond program as well, and I want to add to what trustee Foreman has said. I too was not a board member at that time, but I did express concerns about the bond program at the time that it was proposed, for many of the same reasons that trustee Foreman had concerns, and that is that it was clear that this money was not allocated according to where the needs of the district were. And so what I'm encouraged about now is there's a conversation starting among the board members, among the administrative leaders, and also in the bond advisory committee about rethinking how the money should be distributed and how we can make the bond dollars stretch further because we all know that there's more need than what the original bond program was planned to address. One of the concerns that I had just on a macro level, looking at the bond program, is that out of the $1.6 billion, there was $500 million allocated to expand the capacity of our school district. New seats, new classrooms, new additions, brand-new schools, not replacement schools, but brand-new schools, and we have a student population that's on a slight decline. So the question becomes, why would we expand and why would we increase our capacity? What we're finding out now is that some of the demographics that the bond program was based on were incorrect, so we're not a growing school district, we're actually slightly declining and probably will be over the next several years. We're also finding out that we have more room in our existing schools than we thought we had. So there's a lot of opportunity now for the administration to look at repossessing those dollars away from classroom capacity that we don't need and more toward the beautification and maintenance and good stewardship of the facilities that we already have. So I think that's good. One of the other things that we were told by our new chief operating officer is that when you look at it just big-picture level and how our expenses are broken down, that our soft costs, so our architects, engineers, consultants, project management are running about 30%, whereas in other independent school districts, the percentage is more like 20%. And so it's money that's going to soft costs and not into the hard costs, which are the actual construction dollars. And so there's been a debate about what is the best way to bring our soft costs back in line with what is considered the industry standard. It sounds like we've got some breakthroughs happening here where we can, in some ways, have our cake and eat it too. But I will say that what I want to see, of course, and I think what we all want to see, is as many dollars going into our schools as possible. So I think it's all good news when we come to the bond, and we're seeing new leadership in terms of how we're using our taxpayer dollars in a wide way. I think it's still going to take a lot of discussions and a lot of work amongst the trustees to continue to do some work.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I went to the dentist thinking I might have a simple procedure, and I was just looking out, so my mouth just, no, so. But anyway, I'm one of the few board members that, well, not one of the few, I'm one of the board members up here that actually fought in favor of the bond, and as I told Joe, I think I may have told all of you, just a community member, I'm fighting for the opportunity to have a chance to fight for the money, and if I don't have money, then we're dead. And it's been a struggle ever since the beginning, starting from South Oak Cliff, and we've got to move money from this project to another project. Kingston, they have to pay the $130 million tax for the whole type of school to that. Just like Audrey said, West Dallas population is dropping, so why would you put $130 million tax on a hall? I let you go change the name to Kingston, Flint, Grove. Then you have an idea. So I'm glad that we're at the point now where we are struggling with how to put the money where it needs to be. As Audrey was saying, we have some schools that we're adding on to, that we're building new schools where we might not have a population anymore. We have other schools that need some attention because of the age and the cost of the maintenance that they've had a few years. So I'm looking forward to us continuing to make our bond program much better. I appreciate Nikita and their efforts here. We have been fighting for a minority program manager since I got involved with the O-2 bond, the O-1 bond, we kept saying, when is our time, when is it going to get a minority? And not only did Nikita come with an African-American lead, but they had a Hispanic female as a join, and we're doing. So we have a double, you know, black male, black male, female-run operation coupled up with the Hispanic female operation. And when we finally get to the mountain top, somebody tries to pull us back down. So just like Joe's saying, we're not going to vote on that Thursday, but hopefully we can come to some agreements with the program management for the bond. Still take some funds to go on other projects, but also make sure we have oversight and accountability that we need to place. So we're talking about the District of Innovation also. Some of you probably don't know much about that, but that law is part of charter school law, part of charter school law, part of the same group of laws that talks about home rules. Talks about, you know, how we can do things differently. And, you know, the district wants to look at starting schools earlier as part of the District of Innovation process, and also look at possibly not having certified teachers, or some of them not having certified teachers. So we have some concerns in place, and we want to address those. The last thing I want to bring up is, right before Christmas, I was going to say, right before Christmas, the board was forced to go through training. The board was forced to go through training so that we could get the commissioner to give us a ruling on our plan to get the IR for the local form of schools. The board had to go through training, not on how to make local form of schools better, but how board members should act and how board members should do some things. So he gave us a conditional approval on our plan for our IR school. And now, last year, we got about 37, 38, cut it in half, and staff are telling us to then this year, we're going to cut it in half again. So there's something that we're doing right. We have to go through training to learn about how to be good board members in order to get approval on our local form of schools. We must be doing something right. That's what I want to say. We must be doing something right to go from nearly 40 schools, our IR, to just under 20 schools, or right around 20 schools that are IR, and by the end of the year, we might get around 10. So we're going in the right direction as far as our student rate, but I'll sit down and listen to some questions. Thank you for coming out tonight.
Well, we thank Mr. Blackburn, Dr. Blackburn, for attacking all of the issues at one time, but we are going to allow Ms. Foreman and Ms. Pinkerton to chime in, chime in on District of Innovation and launch our gun strike. I do want to say with regard to the bond program, community, South community, Southern community is adamant about minority participation on Project South Oak Cliff. Again, I agree with the sentiment of Dr. Blackburn, that many meetings were attended, and agreements were made, promises were made with regard to that piece of South Oak Cliff project, and the district is creating and is attempting to get the public out of the way. And so we have to be adamant, we have to be vigilant with regard to pressing not only our trustees, but the board, entire board, with regard to our, you know, promises not promising if they're given for fear. And so not interested in just a bunch of promises, these things have to be followed through, and he gave legitimacy to the project managers that were hired for this project, and for them to be removed for any capacity out of promises were made is not acceptable to the community, so.
You're saying about the reason that the District of Innovation designation was passed is that independent school districts have complained that charter schools don't have to live up to the standards that we are held to? And their answer is, fine, you don't have to follow those standards either, just elect to be a District of Innovation. The problem is that these are standards that we want, that you want, for the children of our community. Things like teacher certification, things like minimum salaries for teachers, teacher planning period, teacher professional development, all those kinds of things that have been put into law over the years for the protection of our teachers and the protection of our students. And so many, many of the potential waivers that we could ask for through the District of Innovation process, I do not want to see, absolutely. There were two things that the administration brought forward that I believe they, their sincerity in wanting to give waivers in these two areas to help in a couple of ways. One is to start the school year earlier, and I'm not sure what happened in the past. Sometimes you say, well, we already tried that and it didn't work, but the concept behind it is that our kids get two more weeks of instruction before they have to take the STAR test, the Advanced Placement test, other types of standardized tests that happen in the year. As a parent, I can tell you what happens with my kids. They take the STAR test, and that's the end of the learning for the objectives for that year, right? The teacher has to cover that year's objectives before late April, early May. Between late April, early May, and the beginning of June, when the kids get out of school, they watch a lot of videos, they do, you know, other types of activities, but they're just simply not as focused. And it's nothing against the teacher, the teacher has to do the hard work in the beginning. The AP test, my daughter this year is taking AP US History, in that 10th grade year, those students have to take an AP test in early May. They also have to take a STAR test in US History. So I was at parent conference tonight, and this teacher explained to me that this semester's going to be really tough because she has to teach all the state history objectives plus everything that's on the AP exam in one semester, and she has to get it all done before the beginning of May. I asked her, would it help you to have two extra weeks to present this material to the students? She said, absolutely would. Her eyes lit up. She didn't know I'm on the board, trustee, so I was asking her off the cuff. But that's the sort of thing that I think is worth a look. Teacher certification, it's a slippery slope, and I want to be sure that if we do it, that it's something that's set up very airtight. The idea is with our early college program, we have people who are teaching at the community college level who cannot currently teach in our high schools, and they have a master's degree, they have 18 credit hours in their area certification, but they don't have a teacher certificate. And so the proposal is that we would waive the requirement for those teachers to go through the teacher certification process. I think that's worth looking at in that very, very narrow context. I'm not in favor of language that talks about, quote, "hard-to-fill positions" because then before you know it, every position is hard to fill, and we have second-grade teachers that don't have a teacher certification, so that's not what we want. I too share the concern that there are, there was one appointee, our trustee, but six for the administration. I want to make sure that the community is represented, but I can tell you this, if what comes out of that committee is something that I feel comfortable with, I won't be voting for it, and then I don't think it'll stay.
Too, Mr. Blackburn indicated that the new Kingston is supposed to be built, is actually more money is put into the school, is actually because of the reduction of the population. I'm thinking they have these type of consultants, whether should I know that before they allocate this money or this desire for this school? Those are two questions I have.
You know, part of the concern that Joe has had, some other people have about the bond, is that there wasn't a whole lot of structure in place, there wasn't a whole lot of reasoning behind the project that was placed. For instance, we've never, the outside did, never built a $130 million high school. The last high school we built was Adamson, and it was around $78 million. So when you get to a $130 million high school, it just seems, and no one could tell me, how did you come up with that dollar map? You asked about all the different projects, what were your plans? Even at Roseville, $45 million set applied, was the plan. No one could tell us. There were several projects, all the ones that I'm working on in District 5, we basically had to pull a committee of community members and school people together to decide on what we're going to do with the money. So there was not a plan on what we were going to do. Somebody, somebody just said, we're going to put $130 million here, $45 million, we're going to get $10 million here, and there wasn't a clear logical reason. I think trustee Nuttall is talking about, you know, just give us the reason, if you're going to use the parsing with the FCI, then follow that, but you have schools that are low FCI that are high on the progress and high dollar maps.
One of the things that I think has to be clear is, I think the bond was pushed the way it was for what we're dealing with today, and that was to be able to control that money and spend it the way they wanted to. That's my opinion. And I've been around bonds for Audrey or Lou, served on the 2002 and the 2008 bond committees. So I clearly understand structure, and Lou will tell you that that was my big deal was is that they didn't bet these projects. They were just putting projects in. They were assigning dollars with no real reason. That is why I said earlier that although we are going through this thing about restructuring with the program managers, I am glad to see that we're also looking at the projects and trying to make sure that we're spending the money where it needs to be spent, because the 2008 and 2002 bond wasn't perfect either. Because what we did was only use demographics and built a lot of schools, but none of these schools over here were touched. And so now you see, and I use a visual for people, if you drive south on 35 and look to your west, there are new schools, but look to your east where you are now. There's Carter, Campbell, Roosevelt, South Oak Cliff, those schools weren't getting anything. And that was what was troubling to me. I want it to be equity throughout the district. We can't get everything we want over here, but we have to be able to make sure that our children are in facilities that work for our children, just like we want other children in facilities that work for them. So that's why I did not support the bond. Not that I do not believe that we needed a bond, I did not support it. We're in the process of trying to go through the rubric to be able to be held accountable by the commissioner for the way we conduct board meetings. And there are some things in the rubric that are frightful, like you can only do two board meetings a month for three hours. I don't even want to talk about this. Only two board meetings a month for three hours, and half of that time has been spent on data. Now, if you've got a $2.3 billion budget, that means you're going to take your eye off the money. If you take your eye off the money, our children won't get served because it takes money to serve our children. That's what Lou and Audrey and I fight for, is equity. So the way this is set up, the way we would have to report to the commissioner is for three years, and we would have to document all of our meetings, all of the time that's spent on every item. And the commissioner is holding a hammer over our heads. A school district that went from 63 low-performance schools when Mike Miles was here to 37 low-performance schools, now we're at 21, and we're being told that we'll probably be at 10 or 11 in a year. We are doing something right. And all of the things that you hear about the trustee, yes, we do have some differences of appearance, but we are working together to make sure that all of these children are served and served well because they only get one shot at education.
The question is that it already failed once. Do we know why? We've got to answer that question before we go forward. Do we know why it failed the first time?
Well, I'm not sure exactly why, but when you start school the first week of August, you have a lot of kids that are still on vacation, still trying to earn bucks in the summertime. So you have a lot of kids who don't come in until around Labor Day, and that's going to still happen like it did years ago, and it's going to happen next year for some reason this past. I don't think starting school earlier is going to help our kids that much. And I've asked staff to show me research that says that if I started school two weeks earlier, it's going to help them. They give me information that says we have more time on task, it will help our kids. I agree with that, you know, but we have a policy that says that you have to have recess. I'm all for recess. We have policies that say that we have to do some other things that takes away from instructional time. I'm just not sure that it's going to give us the benefit. And if I can find some research that says it's going to really give us benefit, then I'm for it. But you know, in Finland, they have this time in school, and they do very well.
Keep it up. Yes.
My concern is program managers. I believe it was Foreman said, as soon as you start advancing, you want to snatch that away from. In the history of D I S D, we have never had a black contract go on a project. We asked for the key to be on our project. I found out that when I was in the advisory board meeting last week, that this agenda really was seeming to have been a done deal. The advisory board had already made up their mind that they were going to do a waiver to the program manager and bring in in-house program manager for them to train. You know, that's just really, you train your supervisor, you know, what kind of business. And so I spoke, we spoke, I brought Todd and no one was with me at the meeting last week, and had some health issues, so I asked for Todd to be accepted when I'm not able to make it. And it's important to be at those meetings because things are done at night when you think everybody's sleeping and decisions are being made, because they thought that was a done deal. And my question was, have you really counted the cost? You know, you're talking about hiring 51, the 29 to 51 in-house program managers paying over $100,000 per year. One thing, safety, safety on sites is a very important thing, you just don't get that overnight, and that takes experience. These guys have experience in there. When you're talking about blocking off walls, it's good to block off their walls for students, but there comes a time when there's fumes, paint, stuff like that, that the walls can't be broken, blocked off. Are you willing to take the risk of the safety that's been occurred with D I S D? And also, their biggest concern seemed to be at that meeting was the reallocation of money and the reevaluation of schools that would need. So you're going to change all of these plans that you have done, you know, over this year, where schools are going to get certain money. One thing, they brought up Carter High School, they need $15 million more for a dollar. Kingston High School, we don't even know what the site's going to be, and they're talking about four north Dallas. You're going to move kids from West Dallas, bust them to four north Dallas? We don't know what that plan is.
I got it, just a little. There is no desire to move kids from West Dallas to four north Dallas.
But then, let me finish. But then I tell you the words, let me finish, man, I'm in for the night. My last name is, the N W S D has asked for water testing on the water all the schools. They gave you a report, and all the schools have led in the water that they have shown us so far, but EPA is... But EPA is saying it's an acceptable level. Scientists and doctors said there's no acceptable level of lead for children.
I think, there are a couple. And I want to be perfectly clear on these two things. One of them is that there has been no talk, no talk of moving kids from West Dallas to four North Downs. Absolutely no talk.
I got more tapes saying four North Downs.
No.
Scott Lang.
Well, I don't know what Scott Lang is saying, but the board has talked about moving any kids from West Dallas. In fact, what the board has talked about, and Lou and I have worked together on it, is to try to make sure that we keep schools in West Dallas because there is declining population in West Dallas. So the schools are getting smaller. And so we are working to try to make sure that we keep schools in West Dallas and specifically wanting Princeton. We are trying to make sure, let me finish because I want to make sure there are a couple of things that need to be. You know, we really need to understand the whole issue with this bond program. I am not against reallocation of bonds. Because it wasn't done correctly to start. Wasn't done correctly to start with, and we really need to look at where we really need to spend money. I mean, we just decided we were going to spend money over here, spend money over here. And we had to pull money to be able to do the fifty-two million, from ten million to fifty-two million for South Old Cliff. Now, if you think that was an easy feat, you're wrong. Because we had to pull money to do that. And let's talk a little bit about the water testing. The district is retesting as we speak. They are retesting as we speak. So I clearly understand nobody wants lead in water for the kids. But they're at two new schools. There are two new schools.
You know, I got the resources.
Wilma Hutchins.
I got the resources.
Wilma Hutchins.